All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to meeting this to order the special meeting of the Bend City Council. It's June 7th, 2022, and we're here to talk about appointing two people to fill vacancies on this council. Do we need to do a roll call? So first, item two is new recommendation from the council vacancy subcommittee and determine the list of candidates for interview. Does one of the members of the subcommittee want to take the lead on this item in walking us through the list of recommendations?
Sure, yeah, so we had narrowed it down to 10 names at the meeting last Friday. By we, I mean myself, councillor Perkins and councillor Broadman. And we did that basically by comparing each other's sort of top candidates list and then coming up with those 10. It's my understanding we have listed on our agenda today eight people because two of those 10, of two of those 10, one person was found to not qualify because they didn't live within the city limits. And then the other person withdrew their application. So that's why we're at eight.
Great. Could you also just explain briefly kind of the parameters you use to determine your top candidates?
Sure, yeah, we started that meeting by each giving our own. So I suppose we could each give our own again so that you can both hear that. But, you know, I looked at, you know, I was leaning towards preferring someone who was not going to run in the election so that we could have someone come in basically and sit for the last part of this year while the voters chose the person to fill that seat more permanently or for a longer term. It was important to me somebody could get started immediately with us. We have work to do and we don't want to have too much delay in what we're trying to accomplish with our goals. So someone that could hit the ground running and then someone that's aligned enough with our goals and our work plan now that they could feel comfortable working with us on achieving those things and are aligned with what we want to do. So those were some of the factors I used. I don't know if you two want to share yours again.
I just said someone who can be able to work within the system of government. It's, you know, it's sometimes unwieldy and sometimes slow. And people who, you know, are able to work within it. Like I said on Friday, they don't have to agree with it. They don't have to not want to disrupt it, but just be able to work within it. And someone who, again, like Melanie said, someone who can get to work on day one because it's such a short-term, short-term basically position. And I talked about someone that would also, because those two people that they are replacing were elected to that position, that someone that shares sort of common values of the people that they would be replacing.
Mayor Pro Tem Broadman, anything else you'd like to share?
No, that all sounds great, consistent with the subcommittee meeting.
Barb, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
The subcommittee?
Yeah, I will say, so we had narrowed it down to 10. We're now down to eight at this moment. And I think we had requested that you both take a look at that and see if there was any way we could narrow it down even more. Should we do that? Should we keep it at eight? We had recommended as a subcommittee about 20 minutes per person for interviews. Again, is that something you agree with or should that change? So I think that's kind of what we need to talk about.
I think personally, keeping it at eight at this point, I, you know, I'm comfortable with that. I think trying to narrow it down at this point, you know, I'm happy with the list of recommendations. And it'll take a little longer, but I think it's worth talking with all of these folks.
Okay.
I agree. I think that 20 minutes per person sounds about right to me. I've done a lot of these interviews over the years and 20 minutes seems like a short time. But I have found that no, 20 minutes is adequate. And that would put us, if we kept all eight, that would have put us at about two and a half hours, which for me personally, that's reasonable. You know, I'm happy to spend that much time. And yeah, I think that's a fine way to proceed.
So you're happy with the group of eight?
I am happy with the group of eight. I'm happy with the applicants. We had so many excellent applicants. I appreciate that the subcommittee did the first narrowing down because we did have so many excellent applications. And yeah, I think we ended up with a good final list for interviews.
Do we have anything else we need to do to formally approve these eight?
No, I think we've captured it. I think the next item is now getting into more of the process and the questions, which I'm happy to help guide you through that.
Yeah, and actually, before we move on, we did want to just take a minute to recognize and appreciate everybody who applied. And I have everyone's names here. So, you know, we, as everybody's heard, we received, what is it, 36 applications, which is just incredible show of, you know, goodwill and amazing, you know, willingness to serve the community. So just wanted to take a couple of minutes to read through everybody and recognize each individual personally. So Andrew Austin, we appreciate your service on the Soil and Water Conservation District and thank you for applying. Michelle Abbey, thank you for your work with the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance and the Deschutes Land Trust. Thank you for applying. Rondo, thank you for all of your engagement with the city over many years. Your service as a veteran and among your many volunteer activities, your service with the American Red Cross. Thank you, Rondo, for applying. Julia Brown, we appreciate your desire to serve Bend and be part of the solution. Thank you for applying, Julia. Matthew Carlson, we appreciate your interest in connecting people and improving the environment where we all live. Thank you for applying, Matthew. Colin Cronin, we appreciate your volunteerism both at home and abroad and your desire to do what is best for people. Thank you, Colin, for applying. Robert Durfee, we appreciate your desire to preserve what makes Bend great and make sure it is the best it can be for future generations. Thank you, Robert, for applying. Jennifer Icone, we appreciate your deep history of service on advisory committees for the U.S. Department of Justice and the Civil Rights Division. Thank you, Jennifer, for applying. Jim Figursky, we appreciate your service on the City of Bend Landmarks Commission and many other local boards and committees. Thank you for applying, Jim. James Hansen, we, while we may not agree with your position on fireworks, we appreciate your passion for this issue. Thank you for applying. Rob Imhoff, we appreciate the many ways you have served youth in the Bend community. Thank you for applying. David Johnson, we appreciate your service on the Mountain High Board of Directors and your desire to bring people together around common solutions. Thank you for applying, David. Karen Johnson, thank you for your service on the Bend Planning Commission and as the Old Farm District Neighborhood Association Land Use Chair. Thank you for applying, Karen. Larry Kine, we appreciate the hundreds of homes you've helped develop, your involvement in guiding the development of roundabouts on the West Side in the early 2000s. Thank you for applying, Larry. Trenton Luther, we appreciate your volunteer service for Habitat for Humanity and Family Kitchen, among many other organizations. Thank you, Trenton, for applying. Contessa Mendoza, thank you for your desire to serve the community and for your work in social services. And thank you for applying. Astrid Mills, we appreciate your service in soup kitchens as well as the Ronald McDonald House. Thank you, Astrid, for applying. William Olson, thank you for your service on advisory boards and committees and your 34 years as a Rotarian in Bend and Central Oregon. Thank you, William, for applying. Ross Orndorf, thank you for your service to the Deschutes Historical Society and for seeing yourself as a peacemaker. Thank you for applying. Joe Pollan, thank you for your interest in giving back to the community and your involvement in coaching youth sports. Thank you for applying. Richard Salber, thank you for volunteering as a mentor to others in the community and for applying. Carl Shoemaker, thank you for your service in the U.S. Coast Guard and your work with people experiencing challenges such as mental health illness or mental illness, homelessness and disabilities. Thank you, Carl, for applying. Jake Thomas, thank you for all of the fundraising you've done for organizations such as Habitat for Humanity and the Humane Society. Thank you for applying. Frank Turek, we appreciate your service on the Bend Infrastructure Advisory Committee and your work on youth outdoor education. Thank you for applying. Brian Vernon, thank you for being a champion for those affected by domestic violence and sexual assault as the board president for Saving Grace, and thank you for applying. Lucas Walker, thank you for your service in the U.S. Army in Afghanistan, and thank you for applying. So that was just a few words about each of these candidates. Obviously, they all put a lot of time into their applications. And I just want to say one final time how much we appreciate this outpouring of willingness to serve in the community from all those who applied. So thank you.
Hey, Mayor, can I do the, can I do the two that were on our shortlist?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so Steve Jorgensen, thanks to him for all of his previous collaborative work with the city and his 10 years working for BPRD. And for Jen Lynch, thanks to her for standing up to found the Oregon Alliance for Gun Safety and all her work as a person in our community that promotes economic development and works on behalf, most recently for Edco as well. So thanks to both of them.
Thanks, Melanie.
Yeah. Okay.
Questions. So I emailed a list of possible questions that align to the themes that you heard from the subcommittee earlier on the qualities that they were looking for in candidates. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so that you can all follow along and give me some direction on narrowing a list of, I think there's probably a dozen or so questions that are proposed. We need to get that to four or five to, in a 20-minute timeframe, if that's what you're looking to achieve. I'd say four or five questions is about max to be able to cover all that. And I think our, what we talked about in the subcommittee and just want to confirm with the full council is that we're obviously doing this in a public manner. So we thought there's no, we'll finalize those questions and we'll give those questions to the candidates ahead of time so that they, we can use the time efficiently and they can become, they'll become prepared to be able to respond right then and there. And then I think the idea is we'll have, all the candidates will have the same questions, but there might be some things that you're curious about, clarification, or want to, you know, ask, that's unique to each candidate. We'll have some, hopefully some time to be able to do that as well. So it's, you know, mostly, you know, fairly scripted with the questions that we have, but also the ability to have some conversation and get to know the candidates a little bit better. That's the intention, big picture. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and pull up the questions. And I derive these questions from a mix of what we did the last time. What we have, questions that we ask our boards, committees and commissions now. You all go through that process to select candidates for those spots. We have a bank of questions that we use for interviewing candidates, so I pulled from that. So kind of just have a potpourri of sources here. But again, goals, four to five questions. The first one, a little bit bigger so you can see it. It's sort of an opening question just to kind of get the conversation going. And that's really just asking the candidate, there's variations here, but asking the candidate to connect their background with the role. So it's a bit of a verbal resume. So I don't know if there's any one particular question that you like there. So I'll kind of go through each one and then see what kind of feedback we have.
It's number four for me.
I like that one, yeah.
Because it hits the, like, the lived experience, which I think is really important and it's a little bit more open.
That last one?
Yeah.
Really? I was just thinking I did not like that one. It's just, just because it's too many words. It's just, but they're going to get the questions in advance. I just remembered that as I'm saying this.
Oh, yeah.
They're not trying to listen this and respond in the moment. I was, yeah.
That's a good point.
So let me look at it again, remembering that.
I appreciate.
My first impulse was keep it simple, why have you apply? You know, just as simple as possible, but.
I just liked how it sort of hit all different parts of it.
Yes, so I'm going to agree with you guys. Yes, number four will be good.
And councillor Broadman, too, I just want to, yep, your thumbs up. So, okay.
I don't know, Eric can see him. I can't see him. Eric can see him.
What's that?
We can't see Anthony anymore.
Yeah.
I know, I can see him on my screen, so, okay. He had a thumbs up. Second is this theme and what I heard is ability to work in a team or within a system. You know, we have all sorts of guiding documents, our charter, our council rules, we have codes, et cetera. So I think the idea, based on some of the feedback I heard, is somebody that can, that understands those systems. And so you want to get at their, you know, what kind of experience they have in working in that environment. They're a little bit different, kind of working in a team versus working in a system. So you'll see some of the questions reflect. I don't know which is more important because we, I couldn't match. We would have 10 questions if we tried to get at everything. So kind of prioritize what's most important. So here's a menu of those to choose from. I don't know if you have any preferences on which one of these you like. Or you don't have to like any of them if there's something else that you like, that you want to propose.
I think I like the last one, maybe a variation on that, where we're specifically asking about coming into a system or a situation midstream. So maybe like councillor Perkins focus on working within a system and maybe working within a system where it was established or, you know, operating prior to your involvement. So maybe it's that last question. That's what I'm most concerned about is that somebody's going to be able to come in and hit the ground running.
Yep. Yeah, I don't think any of these quite capture that. I don't know, though.
And I might ask for, Mary is much better. If you, can you kind of capture?
Decision outside your comfort zone. More coming into.
Maybe just one of the hypotheticals there is that, you know, you were starting, you were coming into a project that maybe you hadn't started or wasn't your idea, just as one of the additional hypotheticals, given that people can read this in advance.
You mean, I mean, I don't, is there a reason to ask a hypothetical or something? Instead of just saying, you know, how do you think you will integrate with a team that's already set goals and has a work plan? And, you know, how will you work within the group to make decisions or something like that?
So let me come back to this because there's another sort of theme that might capture what you're saying. And that's this ability and alignment to achieve current council goals and work plan. So we, but we, maybe we, because we could.
I don't want to beat five.
No. We could look at these questions here that might get at what you're saying.
Could we, if you don't mind, could I just make one more point about the ability to work in a team? It's the second one, but it's the second sentence of the second one. Given what you know about the position and makeup of fellow councillors, tell us how your style would add value to the council. You know, it's a little more of that, there's an existing thing that you're coming into.
Yeah.
But, okay, we'll go ahead and move on to lived.
That's a good thought. So, but let's, let's hold, hold on to that because there's, if I go to this other category, it might capture what you're saying, which is look to see if there's something there that might be. And then we would provide the link to the council goals and work plan. So is part of the question, so they could really see what is in front of you and then decide how, or and then articulate to you how they could add value, you know, here's, I, or, and also, I think it's important that you, what I heard from some of the subcommittee discussion is you want a diversity of value sets that represent Bend, too. There's that representation piece. So using the council goals might allow you to have a conversation about where there's alignment, maybe where there's not, or where they have questions, or where there's, you know, they might have a perspective that might be different. It, that question might be a vehicle to get some of that information.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, there are two separate questions, right? One is, one is about the actual work and the other is about.
The how.
Yeah, the system, the team, the, you know, the council itself. So I think they're sort of two, we're getting at two separate things there.
And the next one coming up is the theme is ability to align with council goals and work plan.
I think I like the first question, though, of this, of the set. No, the first one.
Sorry. There we are. Given the council is already, there we go, on the, on how you would have value. Yeah, I know, I like that one.
Yeah, I like that.
Because this gets a little bit about the what and the how.
Yeah.
This, that question kind of, you could kind of kill two birds with one stone.
Good.
Is that, are we okay there? Anthony? I've lost him.
Uh-oh.
Is he still online, Raymond?
Uh-oh, shoot.
Oh, there he is.
Hey, sorry, yeah, that's good with me.
Okay. So I'm just going to delete in here. So, and then let me go back. Kind of the, a lived experience and the representation of Ben's category. Is there, it kind of straddles two pages, so I can kind of scroll back and forth. Let me try to.
I will click between the pages, it will. It will.
Number two.
Number two, for sure, for me.
On the lived experience, as a city councillor, you will be, I think so, too.
Okay, this is kind of where I'll, I'm going to, unless anybody objects, I'll, we'll kind of go with that. Number two.
Anthony, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to, I just want to make sure I capture this. So that's, I'm going to delete. Two. And this one, so this is the winner. That one, right? Right. And then the last question or theme was around just kind of, these are challenging times. So a couple of options here about just understanding kind of resiliency and.
I really thought this story. Do you really have any idea what you're getting into? It's going to be great. Don't be afraid.
I like the third and fourth questions. And I was always also thinking it might be appropriate to just directly ask, say, here are all the council meetings that you will be expected to attend. Do you know right now, you've got to pre, I mean, because these folks applied in the middle of summer. They already made plans, no fault of their own. But if they're going to be out of the country for a month or, you know, stuff like that, it'd be good to just say, can you commit to coming to all of these meetings? Or if you're going to miss one, you know, which one, you know.
I can, I can, no matter what question we ask, I can tack that on, for sure.
Just so that we have that information. But to me, this is about, you know, understanding the public role and then having a personal plan on how to, they're going to manage that. I think stepping into this without that is a mistake. So I would like to hear how they would answer that. And so for me, that's like sort of the third and fourth question kind of together. Yeah.
I like that, Melanie.
Okay, so we're, I'm going to take these two off. Actually, oh, you said third and fourth, and this one, take this one off, too, right?
Well, that one, I liked, I liked, you know, what's your, I guess they're sort of saying the same thing, but I like that this is saying, this is a public role, there's challenging and controversial issues. And, and, you know, what's your plan to manage that? So some, some way to combine them.
Fine.
Yeah.
Do you want the, the, what support you need from the council? Should I take that off?
We need that.
Yeah, you can take that off.
Clear on.
No, we will be in immediate contact with him as soon as we know who it is. Presenting ourselves, yeah.
So I, we don't need to wordsmith it here. I can, I will do my.
Yeah, just kind of add that on.
Add those two, plus the statement about, here, we meet the first and third Wednesday. Do you foresee any conflicts? To make sure that we're getting that full commitment.
I mean, you can just give them a list of the days because we already know what those are. So just be really explicit, like.
Maybe something, if you, if you foresee any conflicts or have any concerns about your ability to. And that way, if, if the concern is like, well, I don't have childcare.
Right, yeah.
Let us help you.
Right. Some of those might be work around, some of them might be you're literally out in the country or something and you're not going to be able to do it.
Well, I think, again, what we want to do, we'll ask these questions, but if you, you, this can be a little conversation. It's okay, right, to kind of, well, tell me more about that and help me clear, get, help me understand what those barriers are so that you have a full, you have all the information you need to make the decision.
We have to treat everyone fairly. We cannot ask someone, tell us about yourself, and then ask a different someone, why did you do this thing in this way and why didn't you make some other decision? We have to, but we are, but we do not have to word for word. Every person gets exactly the same question. We can use these as a starting point to get information.
We want you to have, we want to have the same baseline information for all the candidates. That's what these questions are doing. But every, every human being is a little, is a little different, has different information that's going to, you want to make sure that you've got a full universe of information.
It's a little different than hiring an employee. When you're hiring an employee, legally, you've got to be very careful about asking exactly the same questions in the same way. But in this case, we have the same questions we'll ask in the same way, but those can lead to more discussion.
Right.
Got it.
Okay.
Then we have, we ended up with four.
Four questions.
So we're not going to do the team system one?
We kind of, what I heard is we tack that on on the how, so.
Go back up, what is it?
So we have this question here, just the, you know, given that council's already into a two-year, tell us, like, on the what, like what you align with, maybe what you don't. And then we have that, and how would you add value to the current team?
Value.
Yeah, I don't like to add value.
Values. It's a little weird.
Okay.
How would you, how would you work with? I mean.
Or look at, you can look at the team building kinds of questions and like.
What could you bring to the team? What would you bring to the team?
Did you not? Because I, I, again, I'm just, I know I keep saying this, but I feel like the goals is that, that's, the, the system component is very different than the goals component. And I would like to get it in some way.
So which one of those questions in that section is, is like the third one?
Well, because I, I feel like that one is a little exclusionary in a sense that, like, you know, a lot of people don't have experience working.
Yeah, but you could use that to frame what you mean by system.
Yeah, yeah.
First one? Integrate yourself, establish credibility, build and maintain positive relationships.
I liked Anthony's idea where he was like sort of morphing two together there, but I lost it. Anthony, do you remember what you said?
Yeah, but it was, it was, it's basically been captured by the goals.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, we could ask for a hypothetical where you've come into a project that you've, you know, you didn't start or initiate.
But it's what you're getting at, councillor Perkins, more about like, there's certain things the city can't do.
Yeah.
Certain things, ways the city, the city works.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to change and that you have to be okay working within that system, even if you are pushing for change. But understanding it's still a system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about combining three with the first sentence of four? Like, please share relevant experience where you're working within a system where you don't have control over the system. And has that been easy for you? Is that part of your comfort zone? Hasn't it?
So I just moved that, so what I, and I can kind of mesh those two together. Is, that's what I just heard, is we have the council goal work plan and then this idea of working within a system.
Yeah.
And I'll, I might look for people that have good, they could piece all that together. But I think I have that concept.
Would you rather have four questions with this one combined than?
I defer to all of you.
I just, I just would like it to be asked, so.
So if there's four questions, that's five minutes a question in 20-minute period. So that, I think, I think that's good.
Okay.
Me, too.
Okay.
I think for the end of this question, I would word it more simply of just that's, you know, systems like the city that are kind of bounded or what's the, you know.
Bounded by extinctions, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would change, how would you?
How would you add value? So what we're doing is we're doing this, we're kind of, how, and how would, how, and how?
Based on its strengths, Melanie.
And how?
You're not, and how?
How you would help.
You work within the system.
Within.
Like the city.
The system.
Yeah. Work within the city system. I mean, that's what they're stepping up to do, so. Within the city system, I mean, that's what they're stepping up to do, so, something like that.
City structure or city system?
System.
It's a system.
So does that, so can we, I can delete this.
Yeah, there we go. I think we got to it. Thank you.
Those are efficient.
And you can do follow-up questions, depending on their answers, about, will you understand that there's many things that you might want to change, but you can't, and you had an experience, you know, depending on an answer, that's where you ask for examples.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we've got our four questions. With a minor, I've got to add a wordsmith a little bit, there's the one around adding, we'll add the kind of qualifier about the dates and times of the council meetings and stuff, so what I plan to do is I'll finalize this, we'll give it to Robin to send to the candidates first thing tomorrow, so they'll have.
I've, I've, I've just drafted them, I've just.
Probably send, I could probably, let me just, I'll, I'll, I think this is simple enough, I think we're really close. I'll get them to you, we'll get them to you, so we can get it out tonight.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I, we're so close.
Okay, so I, I think we got what we need from the council.
Well, then how does, so how does it actually work?
So then, what it'll work, like physically, like, is we'll have the interviews take place here in council chambers, we'll call the candidates in, so we'll have a waiting area there, we'll have, they'll each have a time slot, we'll do like a five-minute, probably break in between them, so 20 minutes with a five-minute break. These are public meetings, though, so, you know, if somebody wants to stay afterwards, they can, but I think to avoid it being too chaotic, I think the, I'm looking at legal, I think it's fine if they, we just say, please wait out before you have your interview.
Boardroom.
Yeah.
That might be more comfortable, yeah.
Than being in a hallway, yeah.
I don't know if we would, and we should talk about whether or not they'd be watching it, if they could watch it in the boardroom, or they could watch it on their phone.
Yeah, there's nothing stopping from anybody from, because it's a public meeting, so it's not, it's just a little unusual than you would have with post, like, interview processes, but just to try to keep the comfort high, where you're not, you know, we don't have a room full of, of people.
Well, the public can attend, right?
Public can attend, but just instead of having all the candidates.
Yeah.
Right here, we'll encourage them to come a little bit ahead of time, and of course they can watch, but they would physically be here at the table, and I'll just request that maybe you all could take turns in just helping to facilitate, so as each candidate comes, just welcome them. I think just verbally asking the question, just, even though you're going to be asking, they're getting the questions ahead of time, just, just to help pace would be good.
You might decide, Jenna, like, how you want to do that, the same person asks the same question, or you move it around, depending on how you all want to do that? There's four questions and five of you, so.
You know, one person could just do the welcoming and then turn it over to, and one question per person.
Does everybody feel comfortable just like rotating down the line each time?
Absolutely.
Okay. We can, we can do that, we can pull it off?
Sure.
It's nice not having to ask the same question eight times.
Yeah, let's, let's mix it up.
And then, you know, really, you have time tomorrow, on Thursday, after the interviews, that I think the intention is to begin the deliberation process, and, and to see if you can get to a decision.
On Thursday.
On Thursday. If not, we do have the space booked on Monday, the 13th, from five to.
Three to five.
Or three to five.
The planning commission meets that night, so if we do meet on the 13th, we will be.
Yeah.
Yes, we will. Move to adjourn. All right.
Bye.